You ready? Okay. This will call the Sanger City Council into regular session at 7:03 PM on July the 7th, 2025. If you will, please rise for the invocation to be led by Councilman Gann, followed by the pledge to be led by Councilman Burris.
Pray with me, please. Dear Lord, we come to you to say thank you for all the blessings for it, all the answered prayers that you've given us, and thank you for this time together. Please continue to give us wisdom and continue to give us safety. Our hearts go out to all those that have been affected by the recent storms, but thank you for watching over us. There are many that are still hurting, and we just ask that you protect them and keep everyone safe as you can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The first item on our agenda is always our citizens' input time, where we welcome anyone who wants to speak on an item not on the agenda to come forward and do so. We do request that you fill out a citizens' input form for the records for our city secretary. You don't have to let that hold you up this time, but we would like to get one before you leave tonight. I do have a couple of forms. We normally limit that to about three minutes each, and you state your name and address for the record when you come up here. And also, just so you're aware, it's basically a time for council to hear from citizens, and because it's not a published agenda item, we're prohibited from actually engaging and deliberating on the item. So we'll be all ears, and staff will be all ears. And so when we don't respond back, understand that that's not us, you know, not taking you seriously, it's just a limitation of the process. So I have two forms here. Mr. Bill Botwell, if you're, we'd welcome you to the podium. That would be former Councilman Bill Botwell. So we were excited to see him, him out tonight and appreciate all his service in the past years with the city. So happy to hear from you, Bill.
Thank you very much. I stopped by this evening on a safety factor. The city has an ordinance against use of fireworks within the city limits, and years ago, we took the step to relocate all fireworks stands outside city limits, but they're still very nearby. Unfortunately, for the last four or five years in the area I live in, Sanger Circle, there's now hundreds and hundreds of houses, and people think mistakenly that they live in a country. And the last couple of years, the fireworks have been worse and worse. Now they're using commercial grade. And I was up until a quarter to midnight on July 4th with a garden hose and fire extinguisher in my backyard because in the immediate area of my house, my neighbor and I valued the fireworks demonstration at pushing $4,000. The crowds were out in the street. And the thing that upsets me most about this, our fine city had an excellent display at Porter Park with entertainment, food crafts, free bus rides from the schools, and an excellent fireworks show. I would say that at least 30% of the residents of this city saw the fireworks show from my house on the Fourth of July. This is a serious safety question. It's not a question of if someone will be injured. You've got 600 homes with asphalt roofs, and you've got them close by, and you've got fields on the backyards of some of them that are dry and burned up. I am asking, I did appreciate the notice on the paper about the use of illegal fireworks, but a lot of people don't pay attention to it since how they've been possible to do it for the last four or five years. We need to step up the enforcement. And I know that Denton, City of Denton, they're fine as double what ours is, and they put up signs at every intersection warning people. So I have several ideas if you're interested in them. I don't want to take up your time, but we need help. This is, this is becoming a serious situation. Thank you much.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate you coming out. I have Terry Cornwell.
Hi, Terry Cornwell, 420 Ridgecrest Place, Board President at the Sanger Texas Senior Center. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sanger seniors to thank you. I want to thank the city council, the city manager, and Parks and Rec for our three yes votes at the last city council meeting, which fully sealed your promise that you made in May to the senior centers, seniors. It turned out to be a much longer wait than we had ever anticipated, but we do thank you, and I thank you so much for helping me to be the one to be able to follow through with my word to the seniors that something good was going to happen. We just needed to be patient. I want to thank you for seeing that a thriving senior center in our community will be an asset for Sanger, not just for what it's going to bring for this 50-plus senior citizens, but also to the community as a whole. We're looking forward now to a real switch from being stuck in place to being able to move forward. We're now beginning our paperwork so that we're going to have everything in place so that we can start working on our 501(c) paperwork. We are expanding our board, and above all, we're not just dreaming anymore. We're not just thinking of what might or could be, but rather now we're talking about plans and looking forward and doing it with great anticipation. So again, I just want to thank you for realizing that this kind of asset in our community will be a bright spot for our entire town, not just the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the citizens' input time? Okay. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, council will move on to the consent agenda. You have several items listed there for various plats, several plats with some action on them, and then our minutes from June 12th and June 16th. As always, you're welcome to pull an item if you'd like to discuss it or ask questions about it, or we can vote the consent agenda as presented. I'll leave it to your pleasure.
I don't have any issues with pulling anything, so I'll defer. And if nobody else on council wants to, I'm making a motion.
I'm not hearing anybody that's wanting to pull anything, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented in the matter of items, or that with the items two through seven.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Bill Hughes, seconded by Councilman Burris, to approve the consent agenda as presented, which is items two through seven in our current pack. All in favor of that motion indicate by raising your hand. Pass it unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our first public hearing, item eight, which is conduct a public hearing on the creation of the Alotta Public Improvement District Number One, PID 01, from the PAC Group Limited and Ron Williamson Quarter Horses, Inc., the owners. I'll open the public hearing at 7:12, and let staff introduce the public hearing, and then we can hear from everybody.
So this is the resolution that would create the Alotta PID. What this resolution contains is the advisability of the proposed improvements, the general nature of the proposed improvements, estimated cost, and the authorized improvements, and boundaries of the district, management of the district, and the advisory board. So this is what would actually create the PID prior to the zoning and the preliminary plating. And we do have people here representing the city side and the Alotta side.
Okay. With that introduction, do I have anyone from the public that would like to do, have any questions or give input during the public hearing timeframe? Okay. And we can always, we can hear from the developer now, or we can, if council asks questions, we can deal with that later on in our action items. Unless the, having no one approaching the podium, I presume the developer and representative's okay with moving, moving on at this time?
Second, so they do have a presentation they will present to you.
During action items, okay. All right. So I'm not seeing anyone interested in speaking during the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:14 PM, and we'll move to the next public hearing, item nine, which is conduct a public hearing on a request for zoning change from agricultural aid to plan development PD for a total of 306.36 acres of land, 60 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track Four, and 246 dot 36 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track Eight within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet of the, from the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road. We'll open the public hearing at 7:14. Let staff do the introduction.
So this is the zoning case that is, that is the partner to the bid creation of the PID. They are looking to develop not more than 1,100 homes on this. They are all being single family homes. The lot will range between the 50 and 60 foot range. The house sizes for the 60 foot lots, which will be called their estate lots, will be a minimum 2,000 square feet, with the exception of 8 out of 25%, could be between 1,800 and 2,000. The manor lots, which are their 50 foot lots, would be a minimum 1,800 square feet, again with the exception of 25%, which would be between 1,600 and 1,800. So these kind of follow our housing guidelines, trying to get better in line with that venue on the upper end. They will have 71.63 acres of open space. This will contain part of retention, but also walking trails, parks, they propose an amenities center that will have a pool and amenities for the residents. With this, the amenities would be completed prior to phase one, so with phase one, that amenities center would be completed with that. The parks would have various different items throughout them, and all the playground equipment would be commercial grade. That's kind of what we're looking at. We did go out for the turn notices and received six opposed. Most of the opposition was because of additional houses, residential traffic, those things. That is what.
Okay. So we're in the public hearing timeframe, so again, anyone wishing to speak on this zoning change related to the PID is welcome to come forward now. Those who have given notice to us via paper, which we, staff has provided, if anybody's wishing to express opinion now would be the time to do so, is to come forward during the public hearing timeframe. Okay. Seeing no one approaching the podium for public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at 7:17, and that'll bring us into our action items. The first item, item 10, is consideration of possible action on Resolution 2025-08, the creation of the Alotta Public Improvement District Number One, PID 01, from the PAC Group Limited and Ron Williamson Quarter Horse, Horses, Inc., the owners. Happy to hear from you.
So this is the item we just talked about. Alotta will present their presentation here.
Great. Thank you. There we go.
I'm here with this Mary Jones. Mary Jones is the developer and home builder on the Alotta project. Thank you for letting us show you a few slides, and I can tell you a little bit about Mary Jones, and just an overview of the project. Mary Jones is a national home builder, a publicly traded home builder. We're building homes in 10 different states, 20 different division offices. In 2023, we have the fifth most closings, based on overall closing volume in the country. Here in DFW, we have about 20 active communities who are building some homes right now, but more on the way. And the closest one we have to here right now is the current, our Ashford Park community to Sanger. That's a little bit on Mary's. We did enter the project for a lot of, and worked on this for over a year with city staff. So we had our pre-application conference in 2024, and then we had several meetings and then we had the city manager and recent meeting with staff, and we got to these weekly PID calls in February of 2025. We've kind of been checking in with Brady, Mary Penny, and their teams, and, you know, making sure we're on the same page since February. In March, we were at PNC, and we got approval of the PD zoning and the preliminary plating at that time. And then just a few weeks ago, we were here at the city council for approval of the PID petition and the development agreement for this project. This is an overall concept plan for Alotta, as Brady mentioned, it's about 1,000 total lives. What we really tried to focus on with this community is off of Bell's Road and on the southern end. We have about 20 acres set aside for the amenities center, a public park, and about 10 acres of, of that line, which is number three on the map. The amenities center is about five acres, and the public park, which we're dedicating to the city, is about five acres as well. So we really like to have that, you know, it's a sense of providing with the community. When you're coming off 35, you know, Bell's Road, that's everyone's going to see first is the, is the left line, the public park, the amenities center. Really try to be that open, and then you get into the community behind it, and there's also additional open spaces. You know, natural areas, there's power lines probably north and south, and in the middle of the project, which we're planning to build concrete trails underneath. It's that in a minute.
Real quick, what was number five? I didn't see it under legend. What are the fives?
Those are disention and retention areas. Actually, going to number four on the legend.
Okay.
So those are, five is actually an existing creek, or sorry, block, not five, is an existing creek.
Right.
Even that one. And then there's some planned disention, you know, within the project. So we can preserve the existing close of the creek and then gather our water and then send it through our storm clearing system.
So you don't plan on disturbing that at all?
We don't. No, not at all. So there's a creek that runs from five, the northern five, into the southern five, through the property ownership metal, but that will be, I'm just saying, the same with this right now. And then this shows our lockdowns. There's about 1,000 lots, 50 foot and 60 foot lots. There's about 70% 50 foot, 30% 60 foot. And then again, the amenities, public park, wet line, southern quarter. And in the PD and the DA, we've also specified that we're going to dedicate 21 acres to the city for parkland dedication, which includes the five acre public park. And then some of this acre is running north and south underneath the power lines and that's the power lines. All the, all the areas are green on this map.
You said they're going to dedicate all the areas to the green?
All the areas are green, which adds up to 21 acres total.
Okay.
This is a picture of the, it's a six foot concrete trail that we would like to build in the open space area, but also connects to the main spine road, again, kind of anywhere or so, connecting the community. And also, it'll line up with the, the trails to the south of Bell's Road, that development next to the, the Tom Thome. So would provide some connectivity between both subdivisions, all the, as well as our subdivision. This is a view from start to bottom, right corner, the southeastern corner of our community. When you come off 35, you're on Bell's Road. This is that left line. It's a rendering light that'll look like, you know, after everything's constructed. So this is the very first view of the residence, and everyone in steerage around would get when you drive on this project. Again, the left line. And then this is an overlook of the amenities center, where we plan to build a pool, a shape structure, restroom facility, picnic tables, they have some RV grills, cool chairs, one more shot, just kind of a little, you know, cool restroom shape structure. Do you have a one-way video? We can play. I'm not sure I've done this. Showing up on here tonight. That was over here. So this will kind of give you a walk through of the, the open space and, over here, the amenities center. So again, a start of Bell's Road, when you first drive by into the project, walk around the left line. Overlooking the amenities. Picnic tables, parking grills, cool chairs. And then the public park is situated right where the aid is, a lot of, it'd be right next to the amenities center, the five acres that the city could, you know, build whatever on that concrete. Trying to get back to the selection of them. Long way to go. This is the longest part of the presentation.
Look, one to the right. One more, one.
There we go. All right. That was kind of overview of the community. These are the, these are some of our additions that we planned to build here. We have, you know, this is a handful, so on the 50 foot lots, these are the 40 foot line homes that have been on those. And then we also have additions, or some of our larger homes, 50 foot line homes have been on the 60 foot line lots. Some of these have three car garages, you know, front horses, 100% base ingredient on the front of the house, one story and two story plans for each. And I wanted to give y'all just a quick outline of the PD, and kind of help you differ from the base code. Randy already spoke to the, the square foot in those that we have. But if you look at the line, the PD is based on R1 and R2 zoning categories in the base code. And the differences that we have are the side yards are five foot instead of the eight foot or six foot, based on R1 and R2. Our backyards are actually deeper, deeper than the 15 foot that R2 calls for, we're doing 20 foot backyards. Minimum lot square feet is pretty similar to what you see in the base code. Lot depth is deeper, it's not that deep, it's a typo, it's 115 feet for the normal lot depth, except 100 feet for the base code. And minimum home square footage is a little bit smaller, but, you know, closer than what R1 and R2 offer. And then we also are complying with the Sanger exterior design, design criteria. We made a few clarifications in there to allow us to build the homes with three car garages to offer that. We do have a variety of repetition requirements in the PD, and landscaping requirements are similar to the base code. We did specify what large trees and ornamental trees are going to be, just for clarity in the PD. We talked about the park for dedication, 21 acres, and the six foot concrete trails that we plan to build. And we did want to point out that the sales tax benefit, if you calculate, the tax that the city will get per year, the city, just the city tax, would be about $3 million dollars per year from this community alone. And also, our project in the DA, we have Bell's Road expansion. We'll be lining Bell's Road to four lanes from the existing two lane center today. So this exhibit is in the, in the PD, it's in the DA, but just wanted to point out here and show you this, you know, we will be constructing the full four lanes. Mary Jones plans to, they were happening, and then have the city reimburse Mary Jones for the other half, just because our, they do exist in the DA. There is some power line relocation required. We packed initial meetings with RAS, the Light Trade Agency, and consider that they're on board with the project, they'll proceed issues with relocating some of the tower poles. The ultimate right of ways is 80 foot, and the payment would be 57 feet to the road. There's enough existing right of way there today, and we can give enough on our property to where it's, there's no additional right of way needed to be stretched, the full run section.
Let me pause you there, because I just, I perceive the, I'm glad that the right of way is there and that there's not acquisition for it for the people on the south side. The visual, if it's accurate, they may be surprised and not realize they have their right of way that far onto them. If that, I'm presuming that's graphically correct on that one on the left-hand side, because.
It is, yes, the right of way is there, it will.
It's gonna, it's gonna pull some into there, what, what they currently exist with.
It'll be closer into the front of it.
Yeah. But that's, that's what's already, when they, when they got their deed, that right of way is already sitting there. Is there, is mine, is correct?
That's our understanding as well.
I did notice in the conceptual development plan that there's a little wiggle room between y'all and development services to try to tweak and add, you know, because you can't foresee everything that might come up as you get in the details. I'm presuming if we found a problematic area there, that some tweak, a little bit of tweak can happen if right of ways aren't as, as we thought they were.
Agree. I think there's room to tweak it. I think we could, we could give some more on our side, too, on the north end, if we had to shift it, and try not to, you know, to deal with the, the land there.
And Mayor, the, the right, right of way portions are part, what's been identified. Kim Lee Horn is identifying that. Kim Lee Horn was identifying that as part of the. Kim Lee Horn is identifying that, Kim Lee Horn was identifying that as part of the reconstruct on that road already. So those, those numbers should be accurate because they were, they were done by, they were actually done, um, working on that prior to, uh, this, this project.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, the, the added benefit to us is that right there primarily. And so that's the reason, frankly, I'm willing to do the pit. But the same people that that's the big benefit for, the complaints we've gotten about the road needing to be improved are coming from the people that are living along the road. And I'm, I'm concerned about the complaint changing from the roadway. I'm trying to foresee the problem.
Yeah.
Because I think it will be there and if we, if it's the rule and it's the law and it's in the deed, that's one thing. The realities are, they're probably not perceiving that until it happens, how far that it's coming on to them. So when we talk about a little bit of give, I think that might be advisable. Because I think the complaints we got, they weren't necessarily all right there on Bell's Road, but some of them were. It's, it's just the neighbor, neighborly part of, you know, the give and take of that. So anyway, I know that's kind of mushy statement, but.
Mayor, if I could also add a, 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 a little more clarity, not necessarily for the council, but for others that might be listening. Uh, when, when they talk about the electric relocate, that is not a standard distribution line, that is the Brazos Transmission Towers. And the alignment of the road, they had to take into consideration the alignment of that road. The expansion of the road would have put one of those transmission towers in the middle of the road. And that's why you see that, that shift. And they still have to remain cognizant of the spans when they're working with Brazos on how those right of ways set to a degree as well. Because that span does have a factor in how the distance between those poles where, where they might have to go.
So what we're talking about roads, uh, three different colors there, the red, the blue and the yellow. You know, a couple words in the mouth, can you just, I can read it and I think I understand what it means, but can you go ahead and just, um, because that's the, the, the yellow and the blue, it covers the frontage of your property. The red is an extension just to thirty-five, correct?
The red is, it's, it's a two-lane asphalt overlay of the existing Bell's Road. Which we plan to do first, all the way actually, through the red and the blue line. For our phase one park development, do just a repave with the asphalt, give a nice road for people to come in and out on. And then we plan to build the blue and the yellow sections by the end of phase three, park development, prior to beginning of phase three. There's kind of an interim solution, the red line, that does have some kind of basic blue line as well.
So it's not phase one, the blue is not part of phase one, the yellow's not part of phase one. You're saying just two-lane resurf, or you're going to resurface it or make minimal improvements to get down there? That is phase one?
That is what the DA requires for phase one, it's a two-lane asphalt overlay.
No, I understand that, we, we went through the developer agreement last time.
We want to build the four-lane section as soon as possible.
Okay.
We understand the coordination of power line relocation takes some time. So that's how we built it, the two-lane asphalt overlay, it's just an interim solution to have all the work with Brazos and Co-Curts relooking for power lines.
So time, space is important here, you said phase three. What, what do you anticipate beginning phase three from, if you started plus, how many years?
We would plan to start phase one in January, start construction in January twenty-sixth. Takes about a year and a half for the line development work for phase one, doing the start phase two, that's another year and a half, so. By the time, you know, three years now before we start phase three.
So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back and, and look at that developer's agreement again, because you were talking about the last meeting. We were, we were talking about, uh, construction of that road in phase one and I was surprised to hear that, but, uh, that's not me for not asking detailed questions about what construction meant to you. I just know that there's, there's bonding right now, that's a part. It's, it's a sister project and it's been included with Marion as well. And, uh, I'm concerned about the timing of this because when, when the county, when we're ready to go, I mean, we're under engineering right now.
That's, that's part of this phase, right? They are taking over design of and construction of that portion. So there, uh, again, we're still under the agreement of the county, the county's aware of the pit, the county's willing to work with us on how reimbursements and all of those things work on this project. But they, they have probably eight, eight months of design there because there's utilities that will have to be relocated. There's also drainage there, there's a substantial work that will be done on the drainage. I believe they're, uh, working out some details on how to get it under the road, I think there's a couple of options there. So you wouldn't see, you wouldn't conceive, you wouldn't see construction on that expansion for a year, whether it was us or whether it was them, because there's still that much engineering that has to be completed.
I agree with all, what I'm saying is, you're factoring in on phase three. So if you're not ready for phase three, when, when the county has the funds available, everything is ready to go, say there's a delay in, in your project and it takes many years for you to get to phase three, how does that, uh, tie in, how, how do we get that road built prior, or, or?
Yeah.
If you have a lengthy delay, that's what I'm getting at, a lengthy delay.
Phase three is not just an outside day, it's not necessarily on the plan. And I think for us, from a marketing perspective, we want that full road there on day one, we want all four regions for phase one and phase two. Um, not for phase, phase three is really not a mess, it's not on Bell's Road.
I think you sell lots as fast as you can get them on the ground and then start construction and, and that would be great. But, uh, we, we don't always have control of that, the economy may run that. Personally, I think everything's going to pick up, but say it doesn't, that's all I'm trying to do, this worst case scenario.
As soon as we can have our construction plans done, and have the power and relocation coordination done with Co-Curts, with, um, with Brazos, and we're gonna start it, I mean, we want it as quick as the city does. Just to understand that takes longer than the two-lane asphalt overlay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, in my mind, determine who sets, who drives the timeline. The only thing I've heard is phase three, but if the county is ready to go before you're at phase three, does that delay the project?
No, if, if the county is, if the county is ready to go, uh, before they're ready to go, we'll complete that. We'll take the plans and complete that under the bonding and they, but they're right, it, it de-incentivizes them, they're, they're utilizing reimbursement bonds against this project. So the project will get completed either by them or us, it wouldn't delay the construction of that road. But there, again, keeping in mind that the county is also several years back on funding because the priority was Marion and then moving into this. So we were on, your, your roadway right now shows for us, if we were constructing it and your capital plan is a five-year project. They, again, uh, through the pit have the ability to expedite that timeline on our behalf. That's why there was, there was great consideration given to the pit. Because the, the biggest benefit back to us is the ability to have that road probably constructed faster than we would have done it. Obviously, there are variables and factors that could delay any project, but looking at their timelines versus the city and the county's timeline, it's highly probable that that road would be constructed before we had it, had it constructed under the same conditions.
That's all I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want, we want the road. And we know that's a big price tag and there's no doubt y'all could do it faster and cheaper than we could. I just, I just want some reassurance that when the county's ready to give those funds up, somebody's there to take them. And if you're not, we will.
Yeah, and council, uh, not, I, I don't want them to, to play down the, the, uh, the overlay there. They, they agreed to come in and overlay that road and put it in better condition, uh, than it is right now in the interim, which was also another consideration that we, we, that they brought to the table is the ability to make, um, make a massive improvement to that road, uh, aesthetically to what is, what is there during that project, so.
And that would be something that we start right there at the beginning of phase one?
Yes, yeah, we start that at phase one, we want to use that for our marketing agenda for, for phase one buildings.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to set up a mobile repair shop. Alignment center.
Yeah. If my answer is correct, I mean, the blue line is at the current fence line of these residences to the south of the hood. So as far as the perception, maybe, if they do receive that, it's not a problem, that's, that's how.
The, that, the hashed blue line, is that the fences?
Yeah.
Yep.
One question I have, as far as the homes at Mayne Center, all that, is all of that all electric? No natural gas or anything like that on any of the homes or?
Uh, we're hoping to have natural gas from Co-Curts. Or, as we talked about, we'd like to have natural gas for the, for the sewers, mostly.
Okay, so that is for the homes and?
For the homes.
Okay, as well as possibly the amenity center?
Possibly the amenity center, right now we just have a pool and a shade structure, so it's, might not need gas, but for the homes, the homeowners seem to want to have the gas, the gas.
My main thing is, you know, talking about a thousand homes, all that electric being towards our grid and everything, so it's, that was my main, main concern, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and, and you probably talked to staff, I, I haven't seen any of your floor plans or, or anything else, and you said there were a few models.
Yeah, that was one of the things that, uh, uh, when we're staffed up over this, people would come, one of the things, we just didn't want to choose from two, two homes. And every other home, having a mixture, breaking it up, I think is. And, and so usually a developer comes in, they'll have multiple pillars, but you can see the product here, the products there, if you're gonna have, uh, and I know you can't be limitless in all different designs, but having as many designs for people to, to choose from, to break out as you're driving down the street. Me personally, that was always, I, I thought a plus.
We have a lot of designs, we have a variety requirement in the PD also, so we're building for sure.
You used to ask those questions and now that we donate everything to staff, I just want to make sure. So I may, uh, go over a few things that y'all club and y'all written discuss.
I think I just have one, one more question, but this is probably for city manager. With our maloof development, you know, we completely skewed our housing numbers. You know, we, we made that concession to bring that in. I'm not looking for an exact number, but how much does this push us back to where we want to be?
Um, that's, that'll be, that's a better question for Raimi because she keeps that tool, uh, with her. Obviously, you're not getting multifamily in this project, which will help, you know, reduce that because you're getting, you're gonna add more single family. So your percentages on single family will go up, uh, your multifamily will go down, which was the goal as far as the matrix as to the size, again, that's probably a better question for Raimi. Uh, but during that pit process, we are cognizant of trying to keep them balanced.
That, that gave you one.
Yeah.
That non-repeating exhibit, exhibit H, it's on page ninety-three of our packet.
And then the last time I go is to the Volver Water CCN. Currently sixty acres of the water CCN located within Oliver's Water CCN. City of Sanger has the sewer CCN of the whole property and then two-hundred-and-forty acres of the water CCN for our property. So it's, it's just the six, the western sixty acres kind of in blue, but within the red line. On the map, Oliver has approved the decertification and transfer agreement to the City of Sanger. We're working on the survey right now, it's gonna be exact acres, it's the agreement that they approved, it's the, it'll be ready the same day. Working on that as well.
And Nathan Vassar is working on that on our side to ensure the transfer.
One, one last point to, I should have some, on the, the green space. It's customary that developers do dedicate parks, must have done that in the past. Now, I don't know of very many that have that much green space. And I'm not aware of us taking in long stretches of green space like that.
This is.
When we take it in, we, we take it in in the maintenance and.
Yeah.
And that's it, we're not taking in any of the retention bonds or any of that stuff. But it would be the park to the south and that entire strip.
And, and that entire strip is the transmission easement essentially for Brazos and our transmission easement to get out of that substation in the future if, if we continue straight through to Lois.
But would Brazos maintain that, is there easement on that or would we do it?
No, as a dedication parkland, we would do it, uh, primarily, um, that would just be added to our current agreements with, uh, our mowing company. They would add that park and, and that stretch and mow it on schedule.
And Brazos is up there, we're constructing these six-foot concrete trails and that hundred and eighty power lines. Definitely they got most of the space there.
We'll probably do it if you dedicate it to us and for us to know.
Well, they're not, well, they're gonna, they're, it's highly probable they would not let the residents get in there and mow it any, in, anyways.
I mean, it's not about use of space, right, they, they have to be able to access the lines anyways, so if you can make something pretty out of it, I don't know that that's necessarily negative.
Yeah.
Can you go back just a couple more slides towards the meeting? So on this one, it also shows a, on the left as a.
Big rectangle.
Passive part, open space. Is that the, maybe I was reading the wrong, is that the rectangle part or is that like kind of a funky corner lot?
Um, it's, it's, it's the green kind of rectangle shape.
Okay.
We plan for that to be initially, a lot of, amazing by the HLA.
For that, the large rectangle piece?
Yeah, for versus a, uh, top of the map.
Uh, I need a, I need a little part.
So they have a.
If you look, if you look in the middle on the left, a big empty rectangle, nope, down.
Down. A, middle A. Nope, left, keep them.
No, it's your, it's your passive, it's your passive.
It's that little bitty, it's that little bitty dark green, no, that's not their land. It's that little bitty green spot. It's not the big square.
That is not our own.
That's not, they don't own it.
Yeah, that is, that's our current landowner.
You, you notice those, there's houses at front mets there, those are those lots.
Yes.
Yes.
That's where the tree, there's nature to the tree there, um, the backyards.
And then, just a clarifying question about the blue spaces. Those are, are those planning to be detention ponds or retention ponds?
So three of the four will be retention. The one on that would not be, retention is this, like, the northern.
Okay.
Uh, the, the power, I think, the ones.
Well, that's.
The water flows, uh, yeah, so, but the others are going to be retention.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you for taking your time. Council, any questions for staff or developer, Raimi or? Any one on item ten? The creation of the pit.
And again, council, this is just the creation of the pit, keeping in mind that a portion of the creation of the pit was handled with the development agreement that outlines the public improvements that also exist as part of this project. that outlines the public improvements that also exist as part of this project. Counsel, what's your pleasure on 10? Or I don't want to rush you. If you're working through your mind on other questions, I'm happy to be patient.
Okay, Raimi, I'm not getting a distance map. What, how many property owners did they notice Raimi has impacted?
It was a lower number. I'm assuming that in there, I did not.
Oh, of course, I'm kind of sorry. No, 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 no.
It only impacted two hundred feet within this property line. So you're going to get the properties right along Bells, the properties along Mets, and then the property owner to the center there. It's not a large number.
But basically, everybody who's immediately adjacent, right? And because the lots out there are a little bit bigger, that's pretty much. Any other questions of staff? We've got the developer here. Now's the time to ask the questions beyond what we've already done, if you have any.
I think the development agreement spells out everything. This is one of the steps, and we've already done enough to get it started. And there are the triggers in the development agreement. So if no one in council has any objections, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-08, the creation of the allotted public improvement district number one, pit number one, from the PSC Group Limited and Ron Williamson Quarter Horses, Inc., the owners.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Billius, seconded by Councilman Burris, to approve resolution 2025-08, the creation of the allotted public improvement district number one, pit 01, from the PAC Group Limited and Ron Williamson Quarter Horses, Inc., the owners, as presented in your packet. Any other discussion from council or questions?
I think we've already said this. I just want to clarify to myself once again. The road would be taken care of in the first phase, correct?
The overlay of the road would be taken care of in the first phase. Full reconstruction would come later as all the moving parts begin to fit together.
Correct.
With regard to utilities and such. Any other questions or discussion? I don't want to rush you. You okay down there? Alan, you okay? All right, you've heard the motion to approve resolution 2025-08 as read and presented in your packet. All in favor of that motion indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that'll bring us to item 11, which is the related zoning case. Consideration possible action or requests for a zoning change from Agriculture A to Plan Development PD for a total of 306.36 acres of land, 60 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 4, and 246.36 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 8 within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet west of the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road.
You didn't know I was back on? It's only staying on this.
Okay.
Very good, yes. And this is the PD for the pit that you just approved for creation. And so we've kind of talked through some of the things already, talking about the lot size, the house size, and anything today. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to go through and have the bill from here as well.
Lot of the same imagery that we've been through, discussing the bigger picture. To bring us to this point, the practical application of our last vote would be to vote the PD unless you have some concerns or tweaks to that zoning request. I'd entertain any of those at this time. I entertain any questions or tweaks or, you know, it's this, this zoning is the practical step that flows after 10. And so just if there's any minor modification or any kind of questions you need to ask, but frankly, we've dealt with all of the exhibits during item 10. Visual exhibits, anyway.
But 11 is just the zoning change?
Exactly.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion. We approve the zoning change from Agriculture A to Plan Development PD for a total of 303.36 acres of land, 60 acres described as A is an Alpha 1241A is an Alpha Tier Western Track 4, and 246.34 acres described as A is an Alpha 1241Alpha Tier Western Track 8 within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet west of the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road.
Okay, got a motion there. A second?
I'll second.
Mayor?
There's some minor, yeah. So there's some, I'll read the actual, there's a couple of minor misstated amounts. And since we're dealing with a very specific document here, I'm going to reread the specific acreage amounts that are in the motion. And I'm presuming they were meant to be as listed, right? Yeah, and there is also an ordinance number applied to this. This is an ordinance. It's a rezoning ordinance. It's 71925. It's, hold on.
So how is that number again?
It is ordinance 07-19-25. Okay. So you okay amending your motion to say approve ordinance 071925 with the related description in item 11 with the very specific acreages named there? 306.36, 60 acres in one tract and 246.36 acres in the second tract. You okay with that amendment, Gary?
Yes.
Okay, you okay with that second?
Sure, yes.
All right. So, I've got a motion in a second on the ordinance 071925, which is, the motion is to approve the request for a zoning change pursuant to ordinance 071925 from Agriculture A to Plan Development PD for a total of 306.36 acres of land, 60 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 4, and 246.36 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 8 within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet west of the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road.
So did I not say that?
There, some of your numbers were off, so I'm just making sure. I'm just, I don't want any minor thing to be a problem. That's all I'm trying to do here, is make sure we get it exactly right.
Well, I brought my stronger prescription here.
All right, so we've got a motion as second, as I've reread and made sure we had down. Any other discussion or questions around the zoning change of item 11 before we take a vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion as read, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item 12. Consideration possible action on preliminary plat of the lot addition being approximately 306.356 acres of land described as 60 acres described in A 1241A Tier Western Track 4 and 246.36 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet of the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road. So this is the preliminary plat related to the same tract of land.
Mr. Mayor, I put my glasses on, and these numbers are not quite right.
They're not quite the same either, are they?
No.
Somebody rounded on the first one. In their typing. We'll assume that the tract covers it.
Yeah.
Yes, this is the preliminary plat for the tract to be zoned. This plat does match the zoning you just approved. So all comments have been met on this preliminary plat. So staff does recommend approval of this plat. So it's not additions.
Okay. Again, I think this is now the third step in that process. We've seen most of it. What's your pleasure, counsel, on item 12?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve the preliminary plat of a lot addition being approximately 306, 3, 5, 6 acres of land described as 60 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 4 and 246.36 acres described as A 1241A Tier Western within the city of Sanger and generally located north of Bell's Road, approximately 1,035 feet from the intersection of I-35 and Bell's Road.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Billius, seconded by Councilman Burris, approving the preliminary plat of a lot addition being a total of 306.356 acres of land as further described in Agenda Item 12. Any other discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to item 12. Consideration possible action on a minor plat of DeKalb-Carkey addition being approximately 1.375 acres of land described as A 1241A Tier Western Track 239 and Track 240 within the city of Sanger, generally located on northeast corner of Fifth Street and Free Street.
Yes, as you can see, this is on corner of Freeze, Fifth Street, down, right across from the plant garage. This site is microzone B1. It is, a residential is allowed in our B1 zoning district. This plat would create two lots. One would be for the convenience store and one would be for a strip center to go in there beside it as well. So it'll be served by outstanding utilities. And at this time, they did not satisfy all of the engineering comments. So staff has recommended denial based on the fact that all comments have not met in the act.
So they're wanting to put a strip center basically next to the strip center?
Right.
It's right there?
Yeah, we'll just go around.
So since staff's recommending denial, I think it's pretty straightforward. Item, because the applicant's aware that they've not met everything. So what's your pleasure on 13?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we deny item 13 on the condition that all comments have not been satisfied.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Billius, seconded by Councilman Gann, to deny the minor plat of DeKalb-Carkey addition as listed in Agenda Item 13. Any other discussion, anybody? All in favor of the motion to deny, indicate by raising your hand. Motion to deny passes unanimously. That brings us to item 14. By the way, I think all the remaining ones, staff is recommending denial?
Yes, this 14, 15, and 16 are all part of the Lewis Road Estates. It's their phase one, two, and three, so they all have outstanding comments on them.
Okay, so I'll open 14, which is considering possible action on the final plat of Lewis Road Estates, subdivision filing number one, being approximately 38.769 acres of land described as A 0029A RBB Track within the city of Sanger, generally located on the south side of Lewis Road, approximately 1,219 feet west of the intersection of Marion Road and Lewis Road, so.
The only thing that will hang us with this particular phase, they are making sure that they have two access points, not just the one. They work that share of that.
Okay, very good. All right, given that staff's recommending to deny, I'd entertain a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we deny item 14 based on the condition that all comments have not been satisfied.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Billius, seconded by Councilman Burris, to deny the final plat of Lewis Road Estates subdivision filing number one, being approximately 38.769 acres as further described in Agenda Item 14. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. The motion to deny does. That brings us to 15, which is considering possible action on the final plat of Lewis Road Estates subdivision filing number two, being approximately 29.228 acres of land described as A 0029A RBB Track within the city of Sanger, generally located on the south side of Lewis Road, approximately 1,219 feet west of the intersection of Marion Road and Lewis Road.
Yes, so this is phase two of that same Lewis Road Estates. They still have not met some of the engineering comments, so staff is recommending denial based on the condition that all comments have not been satisfied.
And again, the group's aware that they haven't got to that point. This is just part of the procedure to keep the ball rolling with them.
Yes.
What's your pleasure, counsel, on 15?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we deny item 15. It's on not all comments have been satisfied.
Okay, I have a motion there. A second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Burris, seconded by Councilman Gann, to deny the final plat of Lewis Road Estates subdivision filing number two, being approximately 29.228 acres of land as further described in Agenda Item 15. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to deny, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to 16. Consideration possible action on the final plat of Lewis Road Estates subdivision filing number three, being approximately 45.25 acres of land described as A 0029A RBB Track within the city of Sanger and generally located on the south side of Lewis Road, approximately 1,219 feet west of the intersection of Marion Road and Lewis Road.
And this is the phase three of that same development. And so again, all the engineering comments have not been satisfied, so staff is recommending denial based on that condition.
Okay, what's your pleasure, counsel?
Make a motion to deny item 16 based on not all comments have been satisfied.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Burris, seconded by Councilman Gann, to deny the final plat of Lewis Road Estates subdivision filing number three, being approximately 45.25 acres of land as further described in Agenda Item 16. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny, indicate by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Okay, going to go ahead and deal with future agenda items here. Does anybody wish to mention any item for staff to consider for future agenda items? Okay.
Mayor, if I might, the, dealing with future agenda items, I just want to make the council aware that we're cycling through the plats that the council has seen in the past are denied that started here. With the passing of the new code, the PNC will be picking these up in the future. And we're just going to phase out everything that this council has started through the council before they pick up their duties on the new plat. So anything filed hereforward on plating will go to the PNC.
Okay, all right. I think council probably, just to stay abreast of kind of what's going on, like to periodically get maybe a listing or an update about things because that's our way of kind of keeping the pulse on activity. Certainly appreciate planning and zoning, taking that on further, but be nice to, yeah.
Development will be preparing a plating report to let you guys know where they're at procedure with.
Great, thank you. Anything else under future agenda items? You also have some informational items, your ATM's rate schedule and rate filing docket on 17 and 18 items. Any comments or questions on 17 or 18? Okay. Seen no other comments. Council will need to go into executive session and will run these if needed concurrently because we'll be consulting on matters related to each one of them. Attorneys, I'll open both executive session items. So pursuant to Openshooting Act Chapter 551, the council will meet in a closed executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.074, personnel matters for deliberations regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, a city attorney, and Section 551.071, consultation with attorney for deliberations regarding legal (a) pending or contemplated litigation, or (b) a settlement offer, or (2) a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter regarding legal consultation with attorney regarding pending administrative action and all matters incident related thereto. We'll go into executive session at 8:14 PM.
All right, we will call the council out of executive session and into regular session at 9:07 PM. Council will make note that we received an independent investigative report on a personnel complaint matter, and I believe had no action to take on that particular item at this time, but there is other action to take on settlement agreement, and I would entertain a motion related to that.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion we authorize the mayor to execute the settlement agreement and mutual release of claims with the city attorney and execute any other appropriate documents necessary under the settlement agreement.
Okay, got a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a councilman chick, seconded by councilman Gann, to authorize the mayor to execute the settlement agreement and mutual release of claims with the city attorney and execute any other appropriate documents necessary under the settlement agreement. Any other discussion from council? All in favor of this motion indicate by raising your hand. Pass as unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our regular session. I'll call as council meeting adjourned at 9:09 PM. Thank you.